The next item is publicly polled item number one, a Notice Public Hearing Ordinances Amending the San Diego County Code of Regulatory Ordinances and the County Zoning Ordinance Relating to Medical Marijuana Collective Facilities. I would note that we have eight speakers in favor, two individuals in favor not needing to address the board, and ten individuals in opposition wishing to address the board.
Okay, we'll just pause for a moment while we let the fire departments go back to work. Not that they weren't working when they're here, but...
...our yachts pharmacies. It must be a state agency. We've kind of turned this a little on for us. We should have our chance.
Okay, we'll go to item number one as we're clearing out the room here. Scott President.
Chairman Horn, members of the board, on June 30th, 2010, your board passed an ordinance to amend the San Diego County Code of Regulatory Ordinances and the zoning ordinance to adopt the citing, licensing, and operational requirements relating to the establishment of medical marijuana collective facilities in the unincorporated area of the county. Before you today are proposed amendments pertaining to the definition and operation of medical marijuana collective facilities, including the adoption of the licensing fee. Assistant Sheriff Ed Prendergast and Joe Faraci from the Department of Planning and Land Use are here to discuss the proposed amendments. Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Good morning Chairman Horn, members of the board. Last June, when the board approved the original ordinance, the sheriff's department had not completed the necessary fee study. Since the June approval, a comprehensive fee study was conducted to determine the amount of hours and staff needed to enforce and regulate the medical marijuana collective operations. The fee includes costs related to the review and processing of the operating permit, onsite inspections of the collective prior to opening, and ongoing compliance inspections. The fees are based on full cost recovery, which includes fiscal year 2009, 2010 budget unit labor cost, number of positions, productive hours, standardized annual costing, services and supplies, and ongoing costs. In July, the fee study package was submitted to the Sheriff's Management Services Bureau for review. The fee study was subsequently submitted to the county's auditor and controller for approval. Approval from the auditor and controller was received on October 1st, 2010. The final proposed fee is $11,017 per year. To give you a few comparisons, San Francisco's fee is about $11,443, Long Beach is $14,742, the city of Los Angeles is $8,539, and other additional costs. The city of San Diego is estimating a preliminary cost between $25,000 and $30,000. The San Diego County fee is both reasonable and comparable to other jurisdictions throughout the state. In addition to the fee proposal, there is a proposal to amend the county's uniform licensing procedures to allow the sheriff's department to obtain federal criminal histories on those applying for an operating permit via fingerprints transmitted to the FBI. This amendment to the uniform licensing procedures will codify a board resolution passed on April 7th, 2009 that allows the sheriff's department to obtain FBI clearances on all police regulated businesses requiring fingerprints. The proposed amendments also include a new section addressing the delivery of medical marijuana. As jurisdictions throughout the state passed bans of moratoriums or enacted regulations governing medical marijuana, mobile dispensaries or delivery services became more prevalent. Many of the delivery services began a way to avoid regulation. Many of the delivery services operate illegally. The proposed amendment addressing delivery service permits delivery to members of a county-regulated collective by other collective members in accordance with the Health and Safety Code sections. Delivery services operating outside of a county-regulated collective structure will remain illegal. The amendments before the board also include some minor clerical revisions of an administrative nature. At this time, Joe Faraci will discuss the proposed amendments related to planning and land use.
Thank you Assistant Sheriff Prendergast. Good morning Chairman Horn, supervisors. In conjunction with the regulatory code amendments being made by the sheriff's department, the Department of Planning and Land Use proposes two minor updates to the zoning ordinance portion of the medical marijuana collective facility program. The first minor cleanup would simply make the existing definition of the zoning ordinance consistent with an existing definition in the regulatory code text. The definition pertains to who is exempt from the zoning ordinance requirements. The second proposed cleanup would further clarify the definition of a lawfully established nonconforming medical marijuana collective facility. Lawfully established would mean that a lawful medical marijuana collective must have applied and obtained a building permit or certificate of occupancy prior to the start of the board-directed moratorium that went into effect in August 2009. The date of the existing ordinance is proposed to be changed from August 2010 to August 2009 since the lawful medical marijuana facility, if any were lawfully established, could only have been established prior to the board's adoption of the moratorium in August 2009. These are just clarifications and do not change the purpose or intent of the ordinance. The zoning ordinance amendments were presented to the County Planning Commission on January 21st. The commission recommended approval of the changes, however, directed staff to convey to the board certain issues that arose as part of public testimony. The adopted ordinance limits medical marijuana establishments to certain zones and establishes separation requirements for certain sensitive land uses such as churches, schools, and parks. On Friday, the planning commission discussed whether the buffer measurements include such sensitive land uses located in other jurisdictions. For example, at the planning commission hearing, it was highlighted that an existing church within the city of El Cajon is located 1,000 feet of parcels that have been identified as potential medical marijuana collective facility sites in the unincorporated county. The issue of how the buffer applies in situations when sensitive land uses are located in adjoining cities was not specifically addressed in the adopted ordinance. Therefore, the county has not applied the buffer to sensitive uses within cities. Should the ordinance be amended to include application of buffers in adjoining cities, the county inventory of available sites would be reduced. However, this would not constitute a significant reduction in available sites. If your board chooses, the ordinance can be amended to clarify the way the buffers apply. Another issue that was raised at the planning commission was the allegation that there are as many as 17 medical marijuana dispensaries in operation in the unincorporated county which are not in compliance with the zoning or county code requirements. As of the date of this hearing, the county has had a total of 12 code enforcement cases involving illegal marijuana dispensaries. Of the 12 cases, nine have resulted in dispensaries being shut down as a result of code enforcement and sheriff department action. The remaining three, which are recent cases, have been referred to the county council for legal action. It is also important to note that our constituents are an important resource and they are encouraged to contact the county's code enforcement division should they see a dispensary located in their community. Code enforcement will investigate the report and take action as appropriate. That concludes staff's presentation.
And that concludes our presentation. We're here for questions.
We're going to go to our public speakers. We have quite a few.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start first with those speakers who have requested to address the board in favor. I'll call all the names. If you're wishing to address the board, we do ask that you come forward and line up next to the deputy to your right. Thomas Michael, Lane Triplet, Tom Hetherington, Patrice Frema, Barbara Gordon, John Byram, Judy Strang, Dana Stevens. And I would note for the record, two individuals have submitted speaker slips in support registering their position but not needing to address the board. Again, if your name has been called, please come forward. You needn't come forward in the order, but we do need to hear from you. So as you begin, if you state your name for the record, each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes.
My name is John Byram, 1,000 Vale Terrace Vista, Chairman Horn and supervisors. I'm here to speak on the issue regarding these regulations. In North County, in an unincorporated area between Vista and San Marcos, there are two dispensaries that have been violating the ordinance since its inception. Both have received cease and desist orders, letters from the county, and one has a Superior Court ruling directing them to shut down, yet they continue to operate. They are located in an unincorporated area, not zoned for this use as stipulated in the ordinance. The problem with these regulations regarding marijuana dispensaries is that they routinely violate, they're violated throughout California. San Diego County is no different. It costs the county, San Diego, lots of money and resources to try to regulate them and then shut them down. The stores that violate the regulations, over 200 cities and 14 counties have opted to ban them altogether in an effort to avoid these problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Patrice Frema. I am a mother who works with nonprofits who serve families in the unincorporated areas, and as such, I went to the planning commission meeting on Friday. Several people, churches, and youth coalition directors spoke their concern about how youth marijuana rates were skyrocketing and how they want pot shops away from youth-frequented areas. They were accused of speaking hate messages. When is concern for youth a hate message? And when is concern for the health and safety of youth not the most important concern for all of us? I also learned that the counties of Orange, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Los Angeles have banned marijuana stores. So why does San Diego feel they need to allow it? Legal counsel seems to think the county would receive a legal challenge. So what if they do? Please join your board of supervisors, colleagues, and just ban them. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Barbara Gordon. According to the National Institute on Drug Abuse, by the time our teenagers graduate from high school, about 42 percent of them will have tried marijuana. As I have, as a director of the unincorporated areas, I have several youth mentoring programs that I oversee, and I have seen the adverse physical, mental, and emotional effects of marijuana. It does impair their short-term memory, judgment, and distorts the perception. Because marijuana affects the brains, that systems that are still maturing, these young adults, the use by marijuana is, definitely has a negative effect. And contrary to popular belief, marijuana is addictive. The daily use of marijuana adversely affects our young people's academic achievement. Marijuana can cap a young person's potential in life, and because of this, we do not want or need marijuana being sold in our communities. If people feel that they need marijuana, it should be handled as a patient caregiver relationship and not being sold out of a storefront at a strip mall. We need to protect our communities from pot shops, the drug dealing and crime associated with the storefronts. As a concerned citizen, I hope you would ban these and protect our families, residents, and businesses in San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Lane Triplet. I would like to ask the board of supervisors to consider a board a ban on pot shops and let caregivers and patients continue together in their closed-circuit relationships and not open up shop in San Diego County. As it's been mentioned earlier, Riverside, San Bernardino, Orange, and Los Angeles County, and 200 cities across the state have banned them. Let's not make San Diego County a haven for marijuana. I would like to note that the 2010 Monitoring the Future Survey released December 15th, 2010, by the National Institute of Drug Abuse and the University of Michigan showed an increase in marijuana use rate among all grades. The survey included survey ninth, 10th, and 12th graders. With a prevalent measure, the marijuana use rose. So among seniors, it rose 6.1 percent above the year before, which was 5.2 percent. In 10th graders, it rose 3.3 percent above the 2.8 the year before. In 9th graders, it rose 1.2 percent above the 1 percent the year before. Among 10th, 12th graders, it was at its highest point since the 80s. The perceived risk of marijuana use regularly is declining among the 10th and 12th graders, suggesting that marijuana use among our youth will continue to have an upward trend. During a press conference in Washington, DC, Gil Kirilakowski, the Director of the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, called the survey resulting very disappointing, noting that the increased marijuana rates are due largely to mixed messages that our youths are receiving. All this talk about marijuana being medicine is incorrect, and it's sending youth the wrong message. We need parents and adults who influence children in all partnerships in teaching youth about the risks and harms associated with all drug abuse, including marijuana. We need communities to be vigilant, and our county to be vigilant in keeping marijuana out of the hands of our youth. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Good morning Chairman Horn and supervisors. My name is Dana Stevens. I'm here on behalf of Communities Against Substance Abuse. Wanted to speak to the 1,000-feet separation, and I sent these maps to you electronically, but I want to make sure you have them. Look at the, there's one particular map that illustrates this quite clearly, and that's the map that shows the unincorporated part of El Cajon. And in fact, I put a marker for you that shows, and photos that show, frankly, when you step off the curb at Bradley and Wing Street, you've stepped into the city of El Cajon. And right across that street, if you continue walking across the street, you're on the property of Foothills Church. It's quite a large church, you can't really miss it, but it clearly is within the 1,000 feet. El Cajon does not allow marijuana dispensaries, but it just seems to me that if you want to protect the residents within the unincorporated community with this 1,000-feet buffer to sensitive land uses, that it would be respectful to the neighboring communities who are still your constituents across the political boundary. In the, there's quite an elaborate description about measuring, and it goes through walls and it goes through fences, but yet it doesn't go through this invisible boundary of a political line. The other, so I would ask that you include an amendment to include the 1,000-foot, in the 1,000-foot buffer zone, the political boundary between the unincorporated county and the neighboring cities. The other small amendment I would ask you to consider today is in Section 2H under nonconforming uses. I understand that the section describing nonconforming uses is, has standard language used for other police regulated businesses, but these aren't quite the same as a strip club, and some of the language there is, isn't appropriate to these businesses. In fact, in Section 2, subsection H, number four, it talks about the director being able to extend again and again and again, in fact, over four years from 2009 to 2013, a nonconforming use on the grounds that it makes substantial profit. But in your language of your ordinance, it goes on to say rightly so, that these businesses are prohibited from making a profit, and the state attorney general guidelines support that notion. So those two statements are incongruous, and I would ask you to remove that statement from the nonconforming use language. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The gentleman at the counter, have I called your name, sir?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. I was outside in the hallway and I missed my name. Yes, my name's Tom Hetherington. I run a business and it's located at 14866 West Lilac Drive in Bonso, zip code 92003. I would like to discuss the issue of safe access. That seems to be a big issue right now, especially to those people that think that there needs to be a pot shop on every strip mall in every corner of the county. In this day and age, when you can get on your computer, you can Google, and everything can be delivered to your house, including medical marijuana, or pot, whatever you want to call it, just Google marijuana delivery, the area that you live in, and see what pops up. There are plenty of delivery services. Now, I recognize that the county sheriff is trying to eliminate the delivery services that are skirting the county law by holding them accountable to the laws regarding fees and application. Hooray for them for including delivery services in the fees and the restriction that the pot shops will be charged so that the county can recoup the costs associated with monitoring these, this business. I also understand that the code enforcement is exhausting their resources to deal with the illegal stores in the county. That opened without going through the applicant process or during the moratorium in blatant disregard for the laws. However, a caregiver can easily drive marijuana to the patient's home as part of their caregiver responsibilities so that the state law will operate as stated with a closed-circuit relationship of a patient and a caregiver. So why the need for storefronts? A store that irritates everyone around them, especially the churches and the schools and the areas where families and young people congregate? My guess would be to create more marketing and advertising and possibly to pick up walk foot traffic that might be unavailable to them as just being an honest and caring caregiver. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Thomas Michael, 14866 Lilac Drive, Bonso, California, 92003. And at Friday's County Planning Commission, someone said that marijuana isn't addictive. Obviously, that person doesn't know any marijuana addicts, but I do. I would like to share the California Society of Addiction Medicine, or CSAM, statements regarding the addictive nature of marijuana, which is on their website. Epidemiologists have found that 9 percent of people who begin smoking marijuana at ages 18 or older satisfy the criteria for dependence. Unfortunately, that number triples at the ages under 18. And rates of dependence among near-daily users is estimated to be 35 to 40 percent for dependence at some time in their lives. As physicians, CSAM feels that a well-informed public is a prerequisite to making good policies and perpetrating the myth that marijuana is not addictive is a disservice to the significant minority of users who do become addicted. The myth that marijuana does not present the potential for being addictive, especially to adolescents and children, has completely been busted by scientific research from around the world. Whether the supporters of marijuana continue to make their false claims out of ignorance of the scientific facts or wishful thinking, it is important for everyone to be well-informed. Access to marijuana will have health consequences for some, and these consequences will have to be dealt with by us all. The public needs to be aware of the addictive nature of marijuana and prepare to create an effective public health prevention and treatment response. It is this access that concerns us with selling of marijuana in a retail setting. Thank you.
We'll now move to speakers in opposition. As I call your name, if you're wishing to address the board, we'd ask that you come forward. Rudy Reyes, Eugene Davidovich, Terry Best, Vey Linville, Dennis Boisver, Barber, Adella Falk, Donna Lambert, Will Cheesman, James Stacy, and William West. I should begin if you'd state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Rudy Reyes, candidate for second district county supervisor. Let me see, I think we have some issues here with your findings. They don't seem to be supported by what's actually going out in the real world. If you look, now I couldn't get them to put it up on the thing, but it is the sdsheriff.net document, 25-year crime rates, right? We were up here in 1994 when medical marijuana started. We're sitting down here right now at less than 15 per every 1,000. Obviously, these numbers are very well shown, and what you guys are doing is warping the numbers through what I call corruption of the process. In other words, the medical marijuana laws as they were given by the district attorney are very well set up and situated. What you're doing is creating a de facto ban through these uses, and you're using facts which are not supported by any of the evidence. So therefore, what I'm going to say is, under Topanga, Topanga being Topango versus the county of LA, when your facts are no longer supporting the evidence, you guys can be sued. So you guys are opening yourself up to lawsuit, but I understand the fact that you guys want those lawsuits because you guys believe that that's a way to figure it out. Well, actually, this is just a way of dragging your heels. It's another way for you guys to continue the attack without having to continue the attack. And I believe Mr. Roberts would agree wholeheartedly. You guys have spent years, I mean, I started back six, seven years ago dealing with this, and since then, I've had to sue you guys over cards, and I've won. Since then, I've had to sue you guys over various issues, and I've won. The thing here is you guys are using your own prejudice, your own issues, to force these laws. That's where we have a problem. Part two, a lot of these kid issues, the kids aren't the issue here. Most of the patients that you're going to find are people who have been reviewed by a doctor and are adults. Has nothing to do with the kids. The fact is, is Governor Schwarzenegger had more effect on that than we did by imposing and signing a bill which allowed marijuana discrimination or decriminalization just last year. So as of now, possession of less than an ounce is less than infraction, less than a slap on the wrist, and that's Governor Schwarzenegger's fault. Nothing to do with any of this, but you guys are pushing your own views and your own angles, and you guys are trying to prejudice this whole issue. So therefore, I'm asking you guys to stop, readdress this. I mean, I got to say, for me, it's a big step. We at least have some type of guidelines. They may not be the best, but it's something, and it's a step forward. You guys have acknowledged that you had to bow to medical marijuana more than once. This is another one of those situations. Let's get over this. This is like, this is children arguing over here over small things of who's this and who's what, and really, that's bad parenting. Let's be honest. If you can't step up to your children and say, "Look, this is like tobacco, this is like alcohol, it can ruin your life," and it cannot be to ruin your life, depending on how responsible you want to be as an individual, that's where it really is. Not bad parenting trying to say that, "Oh, we're just going to hide them from it." Because the reality is, is for some people, this is a real medicine. And for some people that have been burnt and been through horrible stuff, by the fact of the county, this is a necessity, and you have to work with us. Thank you.
Good morning Chairman Horn, supervisors. Thank you very much for taking the time to hear us out on this issue that's critically important to many thousands of your constituents here in the unincorporated areas of San Diego County. I'd like to first...
Sir, can you identify yourself?
My name is Eugene Davidovich. I'm from Mission Valley. I currently live in Valley Center, and I'd like to talk about, first, the staff that's been working very hard on this issue. Mr. Faraci, Commander Prendergast, and County Council have put in countless hours specifically on this ordinance. However, what we've ended up with, although they've tried very hard to make it legal, we've ended up with a ban. In the last seven months, there hasn't been a single place that's been able to come into compliance with these restrictions. And what I'm here to ask you to do is to reduce those. Please, reduce the restrictions, especially with regards to the sensitivity uses, especially with regards to the zoning restrictions, because we can discuss the fees, whether it's $11,000 or $10,000 or whatever that may be, but right now, we're not even at that point because not a single place has been able to come into compliance. Currently, in the unincorporated areas of the county, we have a de facto ban. Although the wording doesn't specifically say that it's banned, there is no access. So the patients who this law was designed for, the ones that are in the beds, in the hospitals, that can't get out and speak with you today, that can't get out to get their medicine in other towns, will be forced, and have been forced now for the last seven months, to go to the streets. So what we are going to see with this ordinance passing is an increase in crime because there's a lack of safe access to medical marijuana in the city. Several other things I'd like to raise is, first, you have an opportunity to change this way. You can raise a motion today and put it on the table to send this back to staff, and I'd like to urge Supervisor Roberts and Supervisor Cox specifically, please raise a motion today to make this ordinance less restrictive, to send it back to staff, and to actually allow at least one, maybe two places to open in the county that can be regulated, where patients can get their access. And the other thing I'd like to talk about is some of the propaganda that's been put out here earlier today. 9 percent of people who use marijuana, is what the gentleman said, get addicted to it. That's not what we're talking about here. What we're talking about here is the 99 percent of the folks that use this, out of the patients to live, that use this... the patients to live, that use this to breathe, who you'll hear from, that use this every single day as a medicine that helps them maintain a quality of life. And by eliminating access to that medicine, you're forcing the very needy to go to the streets. So I ask you to please consider the safety of our community, consider the safety of our patients, and enact, and send this ordinance back to staff for revision and, and to make it a lot less restrictive and, and something that everybody in the community can live with. And let's avoid litigation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
I live in Spring Valley. My name is Vey Linville. My family made landfall in Newcastle, Delaware, October twenty-fourth, sixteen eighty-four. I'm a free American. I drink cannabis medicines to breathe. They keep me from suffocating. Just over a year ago, I was referred to UCSD for double lung transplant, expected to die. I declined. And I went out and I joined a collective. I bought about a quarter pound of concentrates, and I drank them, and I got better. I'm still on oxygen, but I've outlived all prognoses and don't plan to get a transplant. I keep getting better. It wasn't, it's not always easy for me to come out and speak. It was difficult this morning, but I felt that it was important because of the people who could not come today. The friends that I have that are on dialysis, that are in chemotherapy, beyond that, that are using this as a primary treatment for cancer. Would you make me choose between suffocating and doing business with a drug dealer? I suggest to you that it's wrong. Despite your work on this ordinance, and I respect you for it, Eugene is correct. What you have is a de facto ban. No one's been able to open, even if you don't move this item today for, these items today forward, no one's expected to be able to open. Look at that inventory of sites. Really take a look. There's a radioactive disposal area, there's the middle of a rock quarry with no roads. If somebody developed one of those sites to where a site could be opened, it would no longer be zoned such that it would be possible. This is a health care issue. There are desperately handicapped and sick people that need this medicine to survive. If you persist in your actions, I suggest to you, the sickest people will die. Some people would have you believe, "Oh, well, the patients can just grow their own in the hospice dying." I wasn't able to grow my own medicine. I still don't. "Oh, well, you can just have a caregiver deliver it." Where does the caregiver get it? Where is it legal for me to get my medicine in San Diego County? Yes, there are places still open, but where is it legal in San Diego County for me to buy my medicine? Who can I legally have bring it to me? Thank you. This is wrong.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Terry Best. I'd like to cede my time to my friend Kyle Lancaster here.
That, that is not possible. The rules, the rules preclude that, so if you wish to address the board, you may do that, but you cannot give your time to someone else.
I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed to be here, talking to you. I'm ashamed of all of you who have completely wiped out patients' opportunities to improve their quality of life with access to, to medical cannabis. I'm ashamed of you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Adella Falk. I am an actual constituent here in Lakeside. I reside in Lakeside, so I would like my opinion toward you to hold a little bit more weight than the guests that are speaking today. As I vote and live in this district, so Diane and Ron Roberts and Mr. Cox and Ms. Price, I would ask you all to pay attention to me, to refrain from conversating with other people, and to please stay off your cell phones. To say that it's not going to make a significant difference, Mr. Farachi, you're wrong. We discussed this on the twenty-first. You're taking fifteen estimated parcels, and we decided that immediately it took away six. So how many are you left with? So to say that, that is absolutely wrong. I owned and operated Wisdom Organics and wanted to operate in the city of El Cajon and brought it to their attention months ago that, that this particular church was within a thousand feet, and I became aware that it was because it was in another city. So respecting the law, I declined to open. So I don't think that you have authority or should not take authority in, in allowing and, and putting your opinion on other cities. That's up to them to, to say whether or not they are going to allow medical marijuana collectives there. What you all are doing is rewriting Prop two fifteen by saying that cultivation has to take place in a, in a collective or in a club or in a place that's zoned correctly. That's wrong. I should be able to cultivate at my home when I want to and, and with other patients where we collectively associate and we exchange our cannabis. That's what Prop two fifteen is. You are all taking this out of context. So we need to abide by the law. We need to remember that safe access is crucial. I don't know if you all remember me speaking here seven months ago, but I was in crutches. I was in La Shran crutches. It's only been about six months that I've been walking. I couldn't cook my own food. I couldn't go to the restroom by myself. So to say to me that I can get a caregiver or that I can get a delivery or that it's okay that I don't have access to medicine, that's just ridiculous. If I didn't know somebody to get, to become a caregiver, how, how am I supposed to do that? If I don't have friends or family to take care of me, how am I supposed to do that? I am supposed to have access to medicine, and you're taking it away from me. Mr. Ron Roberts, you were with us last time, so I'm asking you today to do something because I didn't vote for you. I voted for Stephen Whitburn because I want to change. I wanted you county board of supervisors to stand up for your constituents. So, Mr. Roberts, I'm asking you today to stand up for us and don't allow this to go through. Please look at me, honey. That's the discrimination we get.
Next speaker, please.
Did that speaker live in Spring Valley? Is that what you said?
Lakeside.
Lakeside?
Yes.
Okay.
She couldn't vote for you anyway.
It must have been very hard for you to vote for Steve Whitburn, since he wasn't on your ballot, but that's okay.
All right. Next speaker, please.
I just now switched my address to-
Over to Santee?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not-
I reside in Lakeside. So yes, I was able to-
Neither of those are in my district, so-
Next speaker, please.
You're, you're struggling with something, Nick.
Hi. My name is Dennis Boisver, and I live in the city of El Cajon. And I put some pictures up there to give you an idea of what a thousand yards look like, when Denny Way is actually eight hundred yards. That, my truck is parked way at the end, way on the truck. That's Bradley, and it's five lanes and me crossing, and I thought I was going to get hit. That's the, the, there you can see a car going by that again, and I'm standing in front of the church. This is foothills with it magnified so that you can see it, see what it is. This is what it looks like. There's the little reflectors. If you're sitting at Denny's Way, he's looking at it. So you asked me why I think we're being discriminated against. You're telling me that somehow having dispensary in industrial area that looks like that is going to affect the children going to the, the foothill screw, and that somehow we're going to warp their little brains. This is just a level of insanity that's beyond me, and them asking you for two hundred yards to change the county regulations, and by the way, that fence is the county line, then across the street. So they're another, they're almost out of it to begin with. But again, you want to take away safe access from patients, and that's clearly what this is about. I have my county card that you requested to get. I got that. That record gets sent to the state, the state verifies the doctor, the state verifies the condition, then they issued me this card. That is my side of the agreement. Your side of the agreement is to guarantee me safe access, and safe access isn't in the middle of a granite quarry or a radioactive place or where I have to go to industrial area. I live up in Fletcher, I live up in Fletcher Hills, and I look down at Gillespie Field in this area every day. I go by it every day to go get my coffee and make a left-hand turn on Denny Way and go the other way by the strip club or the Love Boutique, which is located even closer, but there's only a six-hundred-yard deal with them, so it's not a problem. So where does it end that people get to be discriminatory? This reminds me of the same kind of conversations I heard earlier that I listened to in the sixties when they were talking about busing can't happen. I'm telling you, it's going to destroy, we can't integrate the schools. This is the same kind of discrimination that goes on and on and on, and throwing the kids under the bus is another one of my favorite, because I worked as a fundraiser for Lockport, New York Police Department back in the day, and we always use the kids if we want to get that extra boost, boost of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
My name is Donna Lambert. Good morning, board members. A zoning ordinance modeled after bathhouses and massage parlors is not the right category for a medical marijuana facility. It is a clear attempt to undermine state law, which allows all medical marijuana patients equal rights to, under the law, to collectively associate for the cultivation of medical marijuana. Activities allowed under two fifteen and SB four twenty are rights, not privileges, and nowhere in these laws are rights given to counties to use zoning to undermine state laws. The correct fee category for medical marijuana is holistic health practitioner, in which the yearly fee is two hundred and four dollars, not eleven thousand. This charge would have to be passed on to patients, many of whom are on social security or limited incomes due to their disabilities and illnesses. These fees will only serve to allow those moneyed groups who see medical marijuana as a lucrative industry and to encourage the profit-making mentality rather than hinder it. There are groups wanting to come from up north, and they have the hundreds of thousands of dollars you want, and they are not representing San Diego patients. In addition, this zoning ordinance continues to create a law for, a situation for law enforcement to continue San Diego's fourteen-year history of undermining state law. Requiring a closed-circuit recording device that records the facial features of all people who enter and exit the building made available to law enforcement on request is one more attempt by this county to undermine the law of the will of the people and who voted to legalize marijuana fourteen years ago, and it's a violation of the Fourth Amendment of the United States against unlawful search and seizure. Sick, dying, and disabled medical marijuana patients are not supposed to be subjected to harassment, arrest, and the stress of going to trial. This ordinance is a clear attempt to use zoning to set up medical marijuana patients and collective groups in San Diego. And you might know from the hundreds of thousands of dollars you guys spent arresting and raiding my house and dragging me through the courts and putting me on trial for providing medical marijuana to another licensed patient, now my liver, my spleen is enlarged, I have varicous in my abdomen because of all the stress-triggered immune problems. SB four twenty and two fifteen were supposed to prevent that. Your zoning things are purposely, you wrote all this to undermine the law. It's one more attempt after fourteen years of continued attempts by San Diego County to undermine this law.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Will Cheeseman. I'm speaking on behalf of the Santee Solutions Coalition, nine-six-one-nine, Cuameca Santee. I'm just going to read a letter that I submitted to Diane Jacob yesterday on behalf of the coalition. I'm writing on behalf of Santee Solutions Coalition about our concerns for the future of the unincorporated area immediately to the south of the border of Santee and the east of Gillespie Field in regards to medical marijuana dispensaries. The city of Santee does not tolerate dispensaries within its city limits, and this unincorporated area is a concern for us. Very near this area are establishments where youth gather, Starbucks on Denny and Magnolia, as well as Taco Bell, In-N-Out Burger, and the Subway on Bradley. Having dispensaries near these locations where many Santee youth frequent and possibly even work is simply unacceptable. Therefore, at this time, we respectfully request that the San Diego County Board of Supervisors consider an additional amendment to the ordinance to create a one-thousand-foot buffer zone from the boundaries of any city limit adjacent to the unincorporated San Diego County where dispensaries will be permitted. This will effectively remove the possibility of marijuana dispensaries being located along the boundaries of Santee and El Cajon, thus ensuring that our youth are not exposed to these establishments in our community. And I could submit this letter to the clerk?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is James Stacy. I live in the unincorporated parts of Vista, twenty-three seventy-eight Primrose Avenue. That's Mr. Horn's district. Now, you guys don't know me, but a lot of people out here know me because the Narcotics Task Force that is sponsored by you guys and with District Attorney Bonnie Demannas raided my collective in Vista, and they tried to put me in jail. They got up to nine felonies, okay? They submitted it to federal court, okay? So these are, you guys, the county not even giving me a chance because there was no medical marijuana in federal court. You thought, "Oh, we'll get Mr. Stacy. He's a terrible person." Well, if you go look at the transcripts, they gave me two years probation. Nine felonies, life imprisonment, but when it got down to it, they gave me two years probation. Why? Because they said I was following state law. They said, three times, my judge said I was following state law. And so they only gave me two years probation. But now I'm a felon, and I got two years probation because the police turned the evidence over to the federal government. And you're trying to say that you're going to have video pictures of every patient that comes in and out, and you're going to give that to the police, who are going to turn over to the federal government? And you're trying to tell me that's not a, a de facto ban or, I mean, you're going to go to a place that's going to videotape you and say, "Hey, you're breaking federal law, and we got a videotape, and we're giving it to the police every day?" So that's really funny to me. I mean, you know, I don't see how you guys can see that as any, or, you know, I, I know you guys are laughing in your heads at us, thinking, "Yeah, that's exactly what our plan was, is to put you all in prison because you're sick, because we don't want to have to deal with you." And, but the people out here, we see it. And I just, I'm just, I'm just like looking in the future. When we go back and we look at the, you know, like we do now, and we look at the Jim Crow laws, where that we set the slaves free and that the local county boards of supervisors kept putting in new laws to make them continue to be slaves or not let them live in the areas that they didn't want them to do? Well, that's what you guys are doing to us. We're the new niggers, okay? We're the new people that get pushed around, that get our rights denied, and that has all these other people come out and make up lies because they don't like us. Show me a collective that has let a underage person in without a doctor's recommendation. There is not one time where that's ever happened. And if the underage persons come in, they've come in with their parent. And if my son or my daughter had cancer, and they're going through chemotherapy, and you want to deny them the ability not to suffer through that, I just can't understand why you think you're in public service. You did such a good job with the fire department. I mean, these guys were all happy. Why are you so evil to us? That's what I don't understand. I mean, I didn't go to your house and do something terrible to your house. I never robbed you. I don't have any kind of record at all, but you wanted to deny me my rights. You wanted to put me in jail.
Thank you, sir.
That concludes public testimony on the side of Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I suppose if the FDA had approved or would approve marijuana as a prescription drug, we wouldn't even be having this discussion today because someone could go to their doctor, get the prescription, and go to a drugstore and be able to access this. So however, we are here today, and there's a long history behind what we have done or not done. We're asking, we're being asked today simply to amend the ordinance that we did adopt and then approve the fees and the regulatory ordinance that the sheriff is recommending. At first, we were criticized for not having an ordinance. Now we're being criticized for having an ordinance. Some want a ban, an outright ban, and, and some want more flexibility to our ordinance. So in the end, today, probably nobody's going to be happy with what we end up doing. Just to clarify from counsel, though, on the ban issue that was cited to us as other jurisdictions have adopted, we've heard before that that is not legal.
That's correct, Chairman Horn and Supervisor Jacob. Our, our view is that the legality of, of outright ban is questionable, and so what we, what we have instead is a ban of unlawful collectives, which is regulations which say that if you are going to have a collective, it has to comply with the law. And so that's, that's the, the tack that staff has taken, which is, which we believe is a, is clearly enforceable. An outright ban, I think the, the courts are, are not completely, completely decided on it, but our belief is that that is not as defensible.
So I believe, Mr. Chairman, what we're trying to do and what staff has brought forward to us is the best we can to implement the law. In that regard, I'd like to put emotion on the floor for the staff recommendation with a couple of- with a couple of changes. One would be to direct staff to add to the end of Section 2D3 for clarification. The distance requirements specified above shall apply whether the use is in the unincorporated area or in an adjacent city. Second, because the medical marijuana facilities are not-for-profit, also to direct staff to delete Section 2H4 because this references for profit made during a period of time. And that would be my motion with those two changes.
Supervisor Slade, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will second Supervisor Jacob's motion. The concern I have is that we have a situation where we have state law and we have federal law, and they're not congruent. And what we need to do is get something done that would work for the people who need medical marijuana, not recreational intoxication. And we have a track record now. We've seen the city of San Diego and other jurisdictions have allowed the dispensaries to be set up. And they were fairly prevalent for a while. In fact, LA, they said they had more dispensaries than Starbucks, which is a pretty amazing statistic if you think about it. And yet, apparently now, after having allowed this, a number of jurisdictions, if one of the speakers said LA has now banned them outright, I don't know if that's accurate, but one of the speakers did say that. A number of jurisdictions, including the city of San Diego, which took quite a much more liberal approach, are now looking at what happened as a result, and they're changing the way they're doing business. And their planning commission recently adopted just about all of the language, according to the article I read in the newspaper, of the county ordinance. The reason for that is because once you see what actually happens on the ground with these dispensaries, it is not really what was advertised. What you see is the prevalent number of people are young males between the ages of 18 and 25, and they line up and they want to get their medical marijuana. And it's not immediate obvious, immediately obvious, that that demographic has usually a lot of degenerative diseases. Most of them don't. And so not all of them have AIDS. We don't have that many AIDS patients. But what we need to do is we need to ensure that we are following the law and that we're protecting residents who need protection. And I believe that is what we are doing here. Now, if in fact the law is, the ordinances are so strict and so restrictive that it is impossible to cite marijuana facility, a legal dispensary, then we should look at that because it seems to me that that would possibly not be in the spirit of the law or even in the letter of the law by the state. But I do believe that we do not need to have a proliferation of these organizations, especially given the fact that this cannabis can be achieved. You can receive it by having it delivered, and you can receive it by making a phone call. And we know that, for example, one of the most abused drugs by children under the ages of 18 is marijuana, so they obviously don't have any trouble right now getting it, so somewhere they're getting it. I think what we need to do is we need to look at what we're approving. And if we're approving something that is supposed to be congruent with state law, then that's what our job is here today. So I will second Supervisor Jacob's motion.
Supervisor Chairman Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think there are some things that most, if not all, of the supervisors would agree with with respect to medical marijuana. And I've heard the comments before, and I think there is an acknowledgement that there is a legitimate place in the pharmacy of medicines that are out there. And I think what's happened here is we've, because of a state initiative, have taken this out of the realm of the medical and put it into a whole different category. And the same could have been done, I guess, with any kind of drug. And that's what's really created the problem. I have too many friends who are going through illnesses where this is a part of their therapy to say that we don't need medical marijuana. For the life of me, why we dispense it in a pharmacy seems to me the fundamental issue and the fundamental problem in where we've moved what should be a medical issue into a law enforcement issue, and I think that's unfortunate. The fees that are represented here, I have no reason to think that's not what the cost is to the county, and we've been consistent, no matter what we're regulating, to have fees that support the county's effort. And while they appear to be high, perhaps that's the price that we're paying by establishing a system of distribution that is completely outside the norm for medical treatment. And I think that's unfortunate. I'm alarmed by what I'm seeing in statistically the disproportionate number of college students who all of a sudden are qualifying for medical marijuana cards. There must be some great epidemic of something that needs immediate medical attention through the use of marijuana that has caused this to happen. And we all know that that's not the case. When I was told earlier during this meeting that you could go online and you could find all this stuff, I thought I would try it just to see what I could find out. And I actually couldn't find out where I could get it delivered, and maybe I was just clumsy enough, you know, to work through that. But I did find out that there were some enterprising person is now in California is producing medical marijuana cola for distribution. We've got so much effort into trying to fight other drinks that contain alcohol that are being abused and used by youngsters, that I just, the role of something like this is just beyond me. And I think we are sending mixed messages, and I think there's a simple and easy fix to all this, and that's to move it back into the medical, completely into the medical distribution system that we have for any other regulated type of drug. So I don't expect that to happen. I think it should happen. I think people who have legitimate medical needs, and I know too many people are in that category, need access to this, but would be very happy going to a pharmacy, as they do for any of the other drugs or medicines, that they need. And in fact, they're far more convenient than the locations that have come up and far more regulated, far more consistent with respect to quality and other issues. So I think this issue, as I understand the staff, this is not really going to significantly change the number of sites. I think unfortunately, the number of sites is probably smaller than it needs to be now, and I don't know how to break through that. I've been on the losing end of those votes before. But I think otherwise, the regulation that's before us is supportable.
Supervisor Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I really concur with all of the comments that Supervisor Roberts has just gone through. I find myself, and this is from our perspective at the county, this is a land use issue. The voters of California in 1996 decided that medical marijuana was going to be an option. Over the course of the last 16 years, there's been varying efforts at the state level to set up a process, which we now have the medical marijuana cards. Clearly, some counties in California and 200-plus cities have taken the position that they want to ban medical marijuana. This county has not taken that position because of recommendation from our county council. I am not a medical guru, genius, or anything related to medicine that I can point to with any expertise, whether there's medical value to marijuana or not. I find myself really frustrated with the fact that we have a federal law that says it's a controlled substance and therefore is not legal for people to use or possess. And we have a state law that says you can use it for medicinal purposes. If this is going to continue to be a medical remedy or a lever for people that have chronic conditions, debilitating diseases, terminally ill people, my heart goes out to them. They need help and assistance somehow. Whether this is the right medicine or not for them or has medicinal value is not anything that's in my pay grade. I just don't know that. So I find myself in a situation where we're trying to balance between federal law, state law. Our focus is on land use regulation. I think what staff has put together in regards to the ordinance seems reasonable. The fees, on the one hand, they seem high, but obviously, when you look at comparison to, I mean, San Francisco has a fee that's very comparable to ours, and there's some counties and some cities that have much higher fees and maybe one or two that have a lower fee, tells me we're probably in the ballpark for, and again, our policy at the county is we want to have a full-cost recovery. So I don't have any concern about that. I do think we need to take a look realistically to make sure that there are suitable locations in the unincorporated area. But most of the people we had speaking today, I think, live in unincorporated cities. And frankly, I just look forward to the day where if there is going to be a continuation of medical marijuana that we put it where it responsibly should be, and that is in the drugstores, then we don't have to deal with licensing individual sites. I mean, if it's got legitimate medical purposes, then you can go to your CVS or Walgreen or Save On Drugstore and deal with it at that location. So I'm going to support the staff recommendation with the modifications that Supervisor Jacob has made.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, the motion on the floor will introduce an ordinance amending Sections 21.102, 21.107, 21.1901, 21.2502, 21.2504, and 21.2505 of the San Diego County Code of Regulatory Ordinances relating to the uniform licensing procedure, fees, and medical marijuana collective facilities. That motion passes unanimously with all board members being present and voting aye.
Aye.
The next item is...